Call the city council work session in order, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Viney?
Here.
Jermaine?
Here.
Lemoore?
Present.
Felder? Whitman?
Excused.
Echangeli?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
So we have a few items and I'll turn it right over to the city manager. I think he has some items that may be to add on, but Mr. Pastu?
Thank you, your honor. Yeah, if we could just work a little different off the agenda there. First one I'd like to do is ALCC update. I know the new director, Felix Hill, provided an update for council. And then on the back end of it, I want, I know Mr. Sell had submitted a general fund budget report. I want to go over that with you real quick. And then I have a handout regarding FCC order as it pertains to deployment of cell towers and distributed antenna systems in our right of way. And then lastly, I'm going to ask that, I'll talk a little bit about the GIS consultant item that you have on the consent agenda about pulling that for, not for, off the agenda, but to change the motion language with that. So with that, Mr. Hill, if he's ready and available.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Just want to provide you all with a short update, some of our progression so far. Over the course of the last month, I've been kind of assessing the center and its functionality, looking and focusing on areas listed below on my sheet. We've rated the organization on HR standard scale. We scored about a 7.5 initially when I came in on a scale from 1 to 100. After some of a few, after a few tweaks in certain areas, we reached about 35.5. This was prior to our initial board meeting on last month. The seven areas that we've been looking at is governance, financial management, stability, information and technology management, human resources management, programs and services, community relations and engagement and fund development, okay? Per the city's request, these are some of the things that we've done thus far. Job descriptions for each staff position has been updated. Background checks have been started for staff and volunteers and we're awaiting all the clearances. Other personnel forms for files have been created and will be signed during staff training in the coming week. Employment agreements, non-disclosure forms, et cetera. Slightly adjusted the hours of operation. Internal process as it relates to the purchasing of items and reimbursements. Employee handbook is currently being updated and will be completed by your September 30th deadline. Community relation, I mean, I'm sorry, community outreach and volunteer program has been established and that will be headed up by Mr. Anthony Hoskins. Financial audit has been received and completed. Board training has been set for October 6th and 13th. And our website development will begin this week. Our RE grant opening event is scheduled on September 29th and we invite each and every one of you to come. It will be from 12 to 8 p.m. on that Saturday.
I'll see if there's any quick inquiries from council for Mr. Hill. John?
Your honor, the, Mr. Hill, the rating system that you just, you mentioned at the very beginning, is that based on what?
Yes, sir. We use the HR council for nonprofit rating system.
And is that a what, a maximum of 100 points?
Yes, sir. That's on a scale from 100 points.
So you started at 7 point?
Once we, once we ran everything after assessing, we were at like a 7.5.
Okay.
The results that came back said that we were on life support. And so after speaking a few things initially, as far as some of the cuts we made as far as positions and finances, we were up to about 35.5. I have yet to re-enter some more data from the things that we've done since last month, but we will have that.
Okay, great. Appreciate it.
Oh, Brian?
Yeah, your honor, you mentioned new hours. What are your new hours?
New hours, Monday through, Monday through Thursday, we're open from 10 to 8. On Friday, we're open from 12 to 4. On Saturday, starting next month, we'll be open from 10 to 3. We also have identified our programs that will be commencing on October 1st that'll go from, for the next six to eight weeks.
Great. Thank you. Cal?
There's been a lot of remodeling going on at the center. Did you want to talk about some of that?
Yes, ma'am. And thank you, Mr. Vince. We have started, well, we're almost complete in repainting the entire inside of the center. We repainted the gym, hallways, all the offices, social area. I think the last project we'll have going into next week will be the fitness rooms. And we're getting our graphics painted into the gym. A big project that we want to do in the gym is to create a mural of individual athletes that have come through the city of Monroe and that center that have been very influential or have exceeded both in high school and college athletically. The mural will be put in the gym as a project we will probably compete over the next year. For now, Mr. Darren Chappell, his face will go up on the wall because the gym's Monroe-ized to him. So we've cleaned out a lot of everything that we had in access. So now we're moving towards getting it back in. It's on the 29th, but we'll also be doing, while the finish going, is giving tours to anybody who wants to do the entire building and see some of the changes that we've made.
It looks really, really nice. Really nice. Anybody can get a chance to stop by before then.
Yeah. Sounds good. Seen other questions? Vince, you have something for?
No, I just, also, I know that there's been some work, I think actually meeting today with Mr., you know, Mark Cochran, Florence of Buchanan, who's been working with Mr. Hill and I think Mr. Freeland this afternoon, planning the board workshop. I think there's, Mr. Hill indicated a couple of sessions scheduled and then also working off of that to address a number of other items contained in the funding agreement that we had. So there's a lot more going, there's a lot going on, a lot more coming too, so certainly appreciate everyone's effort in that regard.
Very good. Thank you. Questions? Thank you, Felix. Thanks for being here this evening.
Thank you.
And then the update.
If I could sneak the next item, I'd like to talk about the library agreement renewal. As indicated in the brief little fact sheet staff report that, you know, we last updated the contract in 2010. And it was for a four-year period for another, along with another four-year renewal with that. And so, you know, I met with Nancy Belair, the librarian for the county system and went through and looked at some of the agreement that was in place, made a few recommended modifications. I did talk with her about a couple of items and both of them, you know, the one item she was comfortable with is that, and it's one of the attachments that you have in the handouts I gave her is the library advisory commission. She certainly was supportive of that. I know that at some point, we were no longer appointing members to that, but she thought it would be helpful, not only, it would be helpful from her to get feedback from the community. The other thing I said is, look, that begs the question, you know, do we get the value for our tax revenue that's generated from here? She did an analysis, you know, asked what those direct costs were. I looked at some of the overhead, you know, assumptions that I would make related to that. And then I'd also know with some of the other direct supports you provide with some resource personnel that go to particularly the Navara library. My sense of it is I was pretty comfortable that we're in the general ballpark and that I would be fine going, renewing the agreement in many similar way that we had done with, most recently, the ALCC and then also with the Sawyer House with it. So I'll throw that out there. She'd be more than happy to come and visit the council if you had specific questions, but I wanted to throw that out here for starters for you.
I have a quick question. I know that your conversations with Nancy, will that come back to us then as far as the agreement or is that something?
Oh, well, I think what I wanted to do is just throw this out there that I was comfortable with some form of an agreement renewal. Yeah, we still have to put the contract language together, but the two things that I really, you know, focused on was, are we getting the bang for our buck based on the property taxable valuation within the city in relationship to the cost of the mill levy that they had? And then, you know, the library advisory commission, you know, on that. And then you get both of those cases. Certainly in the first one, I was fine with it after I looked at what the direct cost and then applied some what I would consider general overhead related expenses, so.
And as you, on your work session this evening is kind of a start review of some of the boards and commissions that we've talked about at a previous work session. That's something that you've asked out here, at least for council's review. And just a refresher, because I know many have seen it already, but as we start talking about this and others, is there things in here that we should be looking at different in terms of, or in relation of a library advisory commission again here in the future? I'll take other, any questions on this for Mr. Pastu? Okay, thanks. Vince?
The next item, it's a handout, is dealing with boards and commissions. Again, you'll see a handout that I provided. Should come right after the library advisory committee. It's a staple two-sheet page. And I will admit, I struggled with how I wanted to present this and I'm going to start with the planning commission since I think that's the one item at first has had the most discussion. And then the second part, I'm going to talk a little bit about the River, Raisin Heritage Corridor East Advisory Team, which was something we talked about in our goals and objectives. But I think going forward, my intent would be if I brought at least one or two of these each work session, we can find our way through over the next several months. A quick review of all of the boards and commissions that we have and where we may make changes. So I think the most substantive one starts obviously with the Citizens Planning Commission and we've had dialogue with this, you know, starting several months ago. The first part of the sheet is, I just simply copied right out of our zoning code, the Citizens Planning Commission, what their duties are, officers in meetings, to give you a sense of what we had there. Not a lot of specifics related to that. And then I started pulling some information from the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. And again, I'll walk through this, the appointments by the chief elected official, in this case, obviously Mayor Clark, subject to a majority of legislative body, which would be the Monroe City Council. The members to select from are five, seven, or nine. We currently have nine members, as you know. The term is three years, although you can stagger those initially at first, but the idea is to have these vacancies come open every, you know, two of them, if you went two or three of them, every, every year. You can have ex officio, for example, mayor, ZBA member, city manager. I think the last one would be a bad idea. And then part of what was kicked around was, you know, an at-large member, whether we wanted to have something in there with other board members, say, for example, a member from the DDA, Brownfield Authority, you know, Port Commission, you know, to serve in those capacities or any other board that we might very well pick from. I think their term is limited to the duration in which the elected official, the mayor, making the appointment would be, so that wouldn't be running a three-year term. The qualifications related to that, obviously must be qualified electors in the city of Monroe. And then I kind of italicized in the three lines there, planning commissions shall represent, shall be representative of all important segments of the community. And then later on, memberships shall be representative of the entire territory to the extent possible. There is a certain ease manner, if you will, related to the fact if we went from nine to seven, that you would have, you know, six commission districts and maybe have represented from each of those and figure out what the last appointment would look like. On the following, next page, I had process to remove members. I will tell you that this is probably an important thing to, going forward, I know in particular, it's probably been better than a decade, but I think the city of Birmingham went through a difficult process to remove one of their planning commission members. And so I think if you are to amend the ordinance, that that would certainly be a consideration. Certainly training requirements, the terms of office. And then I think in a broader sense, what do you want the Citizens Planning Commission to be responsible for reviewing versus administrative staff support, so. So I've listed some items and points for discussion, but I did go down below there, the last, I'll come back to the points of discussion, but we do have an administrative site plan review comprised of five members designated by the manager. I didn't realize I had that authority, but over the weekend I figured it out. But it involves a community development director, planner too, utility director, building official, and city engineer. I do believe that, you know, there is a role for having an administrative plan review, but I also think that it's probably, since it's very, very technical as far as the group that's identified here, there may be some merit to having, for example, an economic development representative and maybe even the city manager as part of it. You'll see things from a little different perspective. So jumping back up a little further from points of discussion, you know, reduce the, or these are questions I'll ask from the council. You know, give it some confirmation, reduce from nine to seven. If seven, you know, make sure that there is a concurrence to appoint by council district. How do you appoint the last one, whether it's ex officio or at-large? The training requirements, we could talk a little bit about that as well. Mr. Buggs and I had some discussion. Terms of office, whether you have term limits associated with it, do you compensate? As I mentioned, city manager will recommend more administrative reviews. And the last one is just from my end of it, an annual work plan. I'm a big advocate of having at least one major planning study every year, whether it's a sub-area plan, a transportation plan, parks and rec, which you have to do every five years, corridor plans, master plan review and update every five years. And certainly ongoing is the incorporate asset management plans into the CIP. These are more of items that, you know, I think are important for the Citizens Planning Commission to have a work plan every year above and beyond just the routine items that may come before it. So having put all that out there, certainly open to thoughts and discussions about the direction that you would give both myself and the city attorney if we are to contemplate the amendment to the ordinance as it pertains to the composition of the Citizens Planning Commission.
So I understand for this evening, at least being a work session, you're just looking for some immediate, maybe thoughts and comments?
Yep.
From the council, things that they, if there's any questions about what you're, they're starting as well. And this will come up again with maybe some more concrete movement forward based on what these things were here tonight, in the future. So it comes from council. Brian?
Your honor, yes. I know last time we discussed this, I had requested some information regarding the attendance of the CPC members. I don't know if we've got any of those facts.
Yeah, that's, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Just, that's something that'll help me determine some of the necessities of, coming with a plan as how we determine what should the Citizens Planning Commission be made up of.
I do have some of that, but it might have some date on it now, so I can get an update as well with the city manager. John, you?
Your honor, I, my thoughts are, I'd like to go down to seven members, one from each precinct. I like the idea of having a rotating member from the DDA, Brownfield and Port Commission. I think it's always good to get other perspectives. Certainly don't have a problem if the economic development director and city manager serve on the site plan review committee. You know, I think the more eyes, the better. I think there should be a requirement for training, either through the Michigan Association of Planning or through Michigan State University Citizen Planner Program. I think the planning commission, maybe I'm wrong, I know the election inspectors that get compensated, but downtown development authority, port authority, brownfield authority, they don't get compensated.
Planning does.
Planning does per meeting.
Yeah, I know, planning does. I guess the point, the point I'm, the point I want to make is, if the other boards and commissions don't get compensated, I don't see the reason why the planning commission needs to get compensated as a citizen volunteer group. So those are my, those are my takes on it. Term of office, three years, staggering like we do now. It's fine.
Other council thoughts, makeup for the boards, this board in particular? I know we'll be talking about some others in the future as well. Brian?
Yeah, I just think that I'd like to see those attendance figures before we think about even going down to seven first. It's hard getting members to attend those meetings. Coming up with a quorum can be very difficult and sometimes you have two people from the same precinct showing up. And this may eliminate that from being a possibility. So I think it's, it's nice to have a larger group to work with and sometimes it's just a little bit more easier to get your quorum and get your objectives completed that meeting night.
Well, I have some thoughts. I, you know, this is, the boards and the commissions and talking to many people, just I know the council does speak with others as well, trying to get the participation from the committee. At least pleased in the last couple of weeks, I've had some outreach and some return emails from a month or so past about it. Interested in, I've delivered a couple of board, and I'll just say packets about what it is to be a commission or a board member. But, and with that, it's still, we have, we have great needs. Going to seven, I can support. I think that it's a matter of how that is. I think, I think it is important to have each precinct representative. I think it's also of the makeup of the boards, so we're as diverse as we can be by those that not only put in, but would go out and continue to make sure all of them as far as our community areas as well as thought process. Maybe credentials, it might be different things that people have that say no when the applications come in. It's not just a matter of getting an application, signing, submitting to the council. Really, I get a chance to talk and ask for some background, items of why, whatever the board may be, in this case, the planning commission, what they understand that role is and why it's important, what the objectives are. Three years, I think, again, is good and staggering as we currently do. Some of the training requirements, I think meeting structure, rules of order, things like that are important because making motions and ideas of understanding that, some basic stuff. And understand that, you know, it's just not a, kind of a jump in, it's, there's a structure to it with the board chair as well is important and vice chair. I think there's basic training that would help anybody joining the board and yet I think there's some basic we probably should go back and start with some that currently are board members because realizing they may never had a order type of training. Though we, Michigan Municipal League also, as John mentioned, a couple of resources, MML also provides also a council, members, new council, but they also support that for board members. I also think their basic advances, as was mentioned, they may be project specific. It might be something that's coming up that is unique, kind of like Vince said, you try to bring the particular type of decision-making you want them to make, but realize they may not have some background. Maybe bringing in somebody that has that, I don't want to say site plan, but whatever it might be, because we do get unique projects that come forward. So I think that's important for staff to make sure to recognize the training that's available and get them trained. Terms of office, I mentioned, compensation. I think, you know, it's tough when you have one that is and one that isn't, so I think in a broad sense, we should look at that. And I do look at the city managers, that's where it was, his comment on the annual work plan. I think that's, that would give the planning commission an understanding over the next year, this is the project, this is a priority. There may be others that come up as well. I think that's a good ending as well, so that's kind of my thoughts out of the start here. I don't know if there's other?
Yeah, your honor, I have one other thought. It's on the terms of office. I, I think in order to encourage the public to get engaged, there's got to be periodically, there's got to be opens on committees and commissions. So if we're going to take a look at the planning commission and other committees, if a term, let's say, is three years and we say that they can have two terms in office, that's, they can serve six years. And after six years, I think they need to rotate off, so you can, you can get other citizens involved and get them acclimated to what the commission is. That'd be, sometimes that's part of the problem. People can't get on a commission because no one ever goes off of a committee. So if we're going to take a look at it, I, I'd like to take a look at, you know, you know, two terms of three years and after that, they have to at least cycle off for a year. They can always come back on here.
So a term limit type component of that. So a comparison to that would be the DDA. It has term limits, however, if you're filling an unexpired term, maybe it's a one year, a year and a half because of Vegas saying they move in. They can finish that unexpired term and still do two full terms. So there's potential for more than six years.
Right.
But the idea is that you get somebody in there instead of just waiting. And actually, it helps out because they get some exposure. I think, you know, maximum two terms with the ability of a term, as well as filling in term limits is, is a consideration on this and currently on some of our other boards as well. Brian?
Yeah, you know, that's a great point about getting new people in. New blood is great. That'd be the beauty of having nine people on the board, is being able to do that and having more at-large positions. So perhaps the nine is the right number for the CPC.
So if I hear correctly, you're looking at it from the, having representation from each of the precincts, but then there's some at-large opportunities, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. I think that's, I'd have to think that through as far as where they come from. I think we'd mentioned it could be come from the DDA or it could be the HDC even. It could be from a variety of other boards, board and stuff.
More than one person from each precinct.
Yeah. Well, that's what we currently have and it allows it to rotate. It doesn't necessarily mean it's a specific precinct, it's where people apply. I will tell you, it's a challenge to get nine people on the planning commission and, but I'm open to the discussion of whether it's seven or nine. And if it's nine, is there that other at-large outside the precinct that might be that person? But seven is, look, as one, and I think the city manager did find it where it could be five, seven, or nine. John?
Your honor, if we go with, I like seven, kind of like how we reduced the number on the zoning board of appeals down to five. But if we, if you went to nine, then I think, at least my suggestion is you would have one person from each precinct and then three people at large that did not represent a precinct because it's unfair that some precincts get more than one member. So.
It obviously would be coming from another precinct. We recognize that, but they, they understand the rule is bringing some of that expertise.
Well, yeah. Technically, you could have somebody, you could have three people, one from the DDA, one from the Brownfield Authority, one from the Port Commission.
Yeah.
Okay. Or the building authority or the zoning board of appeals on the planning commission as well.
And currently on the planning commission cannot have more than two members from the same precinct. And I think if, if it goes now, we'd have to bring that forward as well, so. Other comments? Andrew?
I'm peeking over here at the library advisory committee, chapter 22, section 25, subsection F, where it says, "Three unexcused absences results in removal from the committee." And I agree with Councilman Echangeli and yourself, your honor, with regarding, with regards to making uniform, either compensation or no compensation for all committees. I think it's sort of unbalanced that, well, you get paid to be on the library committee and the CPC, but not the ZBA or the, you know, you see the point. In the same manner, I think that we should make any attendance requirements for those committees to be uniform. I have also heard requests, let's say, from members of boards asking for business cards or some name tag certifying that they have been appointed and confirmed to the committees that they volunteer their time to, because most of them do volunteer. Another alternative, if the, if the city council wanted to consider it, is throwing an appreciation night for all of, all the citizens that sit on the committees, perhaps once a year. I don't know if that's something that the city manager or city staff would like to explore further, but I found myself agreeable to that sort of a proposition.
And Vince can respond to that, because I know that's, we have discussed that. at the thing and I think it's a matter of getting some of this start, but I think it's a great idea as well.
We've had, my experience has been with, um, having, uh, volunteer appreciation, you know, whether it's a dinner or a reception, uh, but just a, a recognition for, um, you know, the time and effort that they make in the community and the difference that they make with, uh, with their engagement, so.
And John has mentioned that as well as that, uh, in the past of having a better structure for them, something we'll have to revisit.
Yeah, it's, Your Honor, it was, uh, the city used to do it. It was, uh, commission members plus their, their partner, significant other wife that would come. You'd end up with a couple hundred people, but the, the, the beauty of it was everybody got to know each other and you kind of, it formed a community that everybody was kind of working on the same team, uh, trying to move the, move the can, push the can, the ball down the road a little bit. Uh, the other, the other thing while we're talking about committees, I, Vince may, may know this, I happened to be, uh, potentially doing some business for the city of Farmington. And so, I was checking their website to find out status, projects, programs. And I happened to notice, uh, at one of their workshop meetings, they had a workshop that was totally dedicated towards interviewing all of the people that wanted to be on a committee or commission, uh, that would be much like what the mayor says, he interviews them all. But this was done before the mayor and council and then the mayor came, would come back with, with, with his recommendations, which I thought was, was interesting because I think it gives the, the, the people that are interested in the committee or commission and it gives the mayor and council a better feeling for why people want to be involved and why they want to be on a particular mission. Uh, and also quizzing them on, you know, kind of how much background they've done. Are they, have they read the community master plan? Have they read the downtown master plan? Have they attended as a citizen, a CPC meeting before their interest? I mean, it's those type of questions I think are, would be good and kind of builds a stronger sense of, of, of team. So, if, you know, if we're thinking about it as a kind of a community, also as a community engagement strategy, then I would, I would consider maybe we take a look at that too as, as part of it.
Yeah, that process, uh, does, um, I won't say delay, but sometimes doesn't get, um, recommendations to council. I, um, tried to understand what the role is and what the commitment is and, you know, it does take some efforts and I think better efforts are better. If we can, uh, combine that, it is, is good. And the recognition, other part is I, I, I talk to people, I say, "Well, so-and-so serves there and this might be a friend of theirs and they don't realize they're serving on another board and commission." So, that, uh, that collective evening, day, afternoon, whatever it is, uh, allows them to see others and understand what their role is. Because if we start having transitions from boards and commissions of timeframe, that doesn't mean they may not fit in another location or have an interest and start to then know who they could ask as well. I always give people the, here's who the board members are and outreach opportunities. I do tell them, you should go to a planning commission meeting or to a, uh, Brownfield meeting to, to, to see that. Read the minutes that are available because you really want them to be informed as well. But Brian, you...
Yeah, uh, I think everybody was wondering about compensation. Uh, I believe it's $25 a meeting currently per, per member for those that take the $25. So, we're not talking about a huge sum of money per meeting. Uh, the city, Citizens Planning Commission meets once a month, if they meet during the month, if there's anything to bring up for them. So, typically they have about nine to 10 meetings a year. Uh, you're talking about, on average, probably about seven people to six people that attend each meeting, which leaves absences, you know, somewhere between two to three people a night. So, uh, and I agree with Councilman Felder, uh, that that may be a good way of, of weeding out who belongs, who does not, you know, as far as the absences, the attendance record more or less. So, uh, still not in favor of, of reducing it yet. I'd, like I said, I'd like to see those numbers, just to put something in, in, uh, a way to make sure that we're doing the right thing.
Okay. Other comments? John?
We're talking about, you know, committees and commissions as a kind of a, an opportunity for community engagement and maybe one of the other things I'll, I'll suggest and let the city manager maul this over with his administrative team is maybe periodically once a year, uh, and it doesn't have to be in January because that's when a lot of the appointments are made, but maybe in the, maybe in the summer, maybe in the early fall. The city administration has a, an evening, an open house where anybody that's interested in being an election inspector, planning commission member, DDA member, Port Authority, they come to an open house and they're, they're informed of all the committees that we have, what their functions are and when they meet and what their responsibilities would be. And then after that, they could, they could fill out an application to decide what they would like to, what committee they'd like to serve on. Uh, and then that just kind of builds the whole educational process of what, what, what the community or how the community organization should work and function. And, and we could, and I'm not, I'm, I'm not even concerned about, if you did something like that, what does it take to be a mayor and a city council person? So, people that are interested in running for mayor and council also know what the responsibilities are and the time commitments are. So, I think that's just a good way of educating people on if they, if they have any involvement in the, uh, in the, they want some involvement in the community.
You know, it's a great point because I think there's three, if not four, members of council currently sitting here that start on our boards and commissions.
And, and also, Your Honor, the, when we had, when you had to, and the council had to appoint, um, the third precinct seat, so, uh, we had to do the interviews. That was very helpful because we did have to do a lot of research and learn a lot about the city. So, I felt like that gave me a leg up, uh, when I actually did run because I had researched the city and the roles and responsibilities of the seat prior to, uh, running for election. So, I like that idea as well.
You know, since we're throwing ideas out, uh, because, uh, you know, John will have this from earlier as well, because as he said, the majority of the boards are appointed in January. And as a new mayor, maybe not having been exposed to other, maybe being out of board commission, January and you walk in and, oh, by the way, by the end of the month, here's 30 people that need to be appointed. And, and, and it's a challenge because then you look at the book, you don't, you have to, you as yourself have to learn everything on boards and commissions and roles and terms and who, who's expiring and who's not. Uh, you know, how, are there any letters? Are there no letters? And it leads sometimes to simply a reappointment because it's convenient. And convenience, when you have a transition, maybe that always, uh, work out the best because then your, your convenience is another two-year or three-year commitment and in hindsight, might not have done the same. So, I don't know how we change it. We have January and June. Looking at all those, because the majority do come at that timeframe and it really takes work early before the term starts and sometimes it's not always on the list as you're good from the November date into January and over the holidays. Maybe, uh, start looking at that, put that calendar for us to look at when, what boards and appointments on what dates are re, are, um, are visited, so. And getting them on the, on the staggered terms is critical. Uh, there's, we have boards, yeah, one more that will come up in a future discussion where five of the seven all expire at the same time and then we have to get that organized. We, I was able to get a lot of it done, going back and making sure it was placed correctly. Now, it's just a matter of getting it separated in that fashion. So, I think that's part of we look at as well as restagger, even though it might be a three-year term. Okay, somebody's going to be two-year because we have to get these on track, so. Things a lot of good discussion, uh, Brian?
Yeah, just one, I, I agree with Councilman Ike Langelley. I think that an open house may be a, a great idea to, uh, just open it up and show people, this is what we do, uh, this is how you accomplish these things, this is how this works. I, I think it's a great idea. Uh, I, there's really no reason we can't start thinking about that a little sooner than later.
I think there's a lot, Vince?
You know, it's, and it's a good segue into the last aspect of it, uh, but one of the things I need to get back in front of city council is how are we doing with our goals and objectives? And ironically, one of them that we need to work a little bit on is goal E, promote community engagement programs, although I think, uh, the C Click Fix was a nice, uh, addition to our community. But, uh, number two is develop committee, commission, service recognition program and number three is initiate Citizens Academy to focus toward committee, commission recruitment. It's already there. Uh, we just need to, at the staff level, kind of initiate it. And the segue is, uh, you know, I think I've got some feedback, I think maybe a city attorney butts, uh, in putting the structure together, uh, there may be a couple of little more decision points that we have to go through, but I think, I think we got enough to get started on looking at amend the ordinance. Uh, one of the other, uh, council goals, uh, under economic development was to establish River Raisin Heritage Corridor Advisory Team. And, uh, it's on the backside of this, uh, Mr. Cochran and I had a little bit of discussion this afternoon, uh, but it is one of your city council goals, uh, and I think the purpose to consider it is to provide advice to city council and Citizens Planning Commission regarding implementation of the, uh, the corridor plan itself. You know, that we envision would be reviewing project and program proposals to ensure consistency intent of, and intent of the master plan. You know, this recent demolition of some homes along the river really gives people a stronger sense of what this can, shape this can take, which is wonderful, but I think you also have to have some brand management, if you will. And, uh, you don't want it to be something that's maybe too commercialized and not consistent with the, the intent of, uh, the master plan or even the national park, uh, uh, program. And certainly the preservation of historic assets. Uh, this last week, we did a tour, uh, again, I sent something to, um, Mark with, uh, LET, thanking him, uh, you know, for providing the staff and the bus to move us around, uh, tour. Uh, but one of the things when we were looking at, there's a parking lot, uh, just, uh, east of the railroad on East Elm, uh, near one of the homes, uh, there's a parking lot and, and Mr. Jeff Green was talking about there being a picket fence, uh, probably a few feet underneath it. And I think some, there's some things we need to, to take into consideration regarding the preservation of historic assets. There is some knowledge in there. And then I think it's always helpful to have a periodic review of the plan itself. I say that because, uh, uh, things do change, uh, you know, for example, you know, may beg the question, uh, do we continue with the extending Noble? We're hopeful on the 13th to have ITC. They're actually moving a lot of those high transmission lines that would be going south of the river, not through Elm Street or even across Noble as initially I had talked about. So, those are the type of things I think are good to have. Uh, you know, the, the structure that was proposed would be an ad hoc committee. Uh, I, we just listed some members, community development director, economic development representative, national park representative, foundation, uh, someone from the county historic commission, a citizen at large, and then maybe just a subject expert at large, not necessarily a, a city resident that would be interested in it. So, we threw that out there to, to get your thought and feedback, uh, whether this is something, uh, you know, as part of your council goals and objectives.
Thoughts? I have one, it's, uh, just on the list of proposed members. Things are good to listen, we can kind of bet through that and think if that's, uh, what the ad hoc committee would be, but, uh, communications, uh, director, uh, as a, or maybe just as a liaison to this group. So, when it comes time to, maybe present some information, updates that, that, um, uh, communications director Egan, if she be, uh, part of that, just to help with the messaging that might be, might be coming out. John?
Uh, yeah, the question for Vince is, is there any difference between an ad hoc committee and an advisory committee?
Um, I think just other than the regularity of their scheduled meetings. Uh, you know, they may go several months without meeting, uh, and then it's a good question whether there's, there's, uh, you know, at a minimum, whether you go quarterly meetings, whether there's any action items or anything for consideration. Sometimes it may not be just the worst thing in the world, but we put it ad hoc, uh, just for, get the discussion whether to have it as a, as a, a, a regular meeting requirement or just to meet as needed.
Thoughts?
He may be talking me into having at least quarterly meetings for another purpose.
Well, I guess, I guess my thought was is that, you know, you, we have kind of a, I think we have a physical boundary for the battlefield site based on the east corridor plan. You know, the idea would be that any project that occurs within that area would then be routed into this committee for some review and comment. So, it's almost like an, they're like an advisory function.
Yes, they are.
Like capital improvement program would go there. Zoning, any type of rezoning would, would go there for their advice and their recommendation regarding the new plan. I just wanted to, if we're going to do it, I want to make sure that they have some clout, okay? Uh, based on the amount of money that we're putting into the, into the battlefield and the amount of, and the amount of, you know, other federal and state resources as well.
I would still envision them, you know, the, the Citizens Planning Commission and the council being the ultimate state.
Sure.
Certainly their feedback and thoughts, I think, would be important in it. Um, and again, by way of example, we've had a couple of items that have come up, uh, you know, the PUD with Mr. Cremins, uh, just on the other side of, sidetracked there. And then the other one, we had some dialogue earlier when dealing with the land acquisition regarding Roush Park and how that may be developed. And so, those are things that I think are important to, you know, with this, uh, committee to, to be engaged in and provide feedback, uh, to planning commission as well as ultimately city council.
Yeah, I think about, uh, John saying there, the HDC somewhat forms that, that role. So, I could see that, that component with this commission as well. There's things the HDC is probably the input and comment, but not necessarily the decision maker, but they're saying these are things you should be considering. I could see that in this part. Other items on, uh, boards, commissions? Yeah, before we transition, I got one, one last comment because, uh, I know it's on our list in the future, but it's only because of the timing of importance, uh, because we're moving forward with the master plan rewrite would be the Recreation Advisory Commission. So, at the next work session, maybe we could have that re-brought up because tomorrow is the, uh, that kind of the open house and the review for that and over the next year, that master plan being rewritten, I think it's important that we really decide what it is about a Recreation Advisory Commission we want it to be and is it the same? Is it different? Does it expand? What's the role? I think now's the time to address that as well, um, because of the, um, the master plan rewrite being taken up again, so, just for next.
I'll have that for the next work session.
Thank you. Uh, next item then on your list there.
Well, this is the add-on, uh, this is, uh, in response to Mr. Seld's correspondence regarding where we finished with the, uh, uh, general fund, uh, for, uh, June 30th. This is this very small print. I apologize for that. And where you see red in the variances, actually red is good. Uh, black is where you have, uh, uh, a negative, uh, or using a, a better, more appro, uh, positive is red is positive, uh, the black is, uh, negative variance. The first page, there's the, you know, just a number of line items, revenue line items. But if you flip to the second page, there's two things I want you to look at. The first one is, uh, the highlighted yellow at the bottom, which shows that, uh, uh, in that regard, that there's, uh, you know, we're 2,782,000 under variance, uh, that, that exclusively deals with the DNR trust fund grant for the acquisitions. And if you carry that down one line before, the lower than that, the total revenues, you can see that those numbers correspond almost identically. And if you look up, uh, the, the one that has the Mishta Blight elimination grant, you can see we budgeted 174.3. Uh, we didn't spend anything in the fiscal year. We obviously spent just about most of it this last week, uh, and so, what I'm trying to drive home with that, while that may look like a pretty significant variance, from an operational standpoint, we actually, uh, our revenues came in higher than, than what was budgeted. This is just purely a function of a couple of grants and the timing related to the expenditures with that. If you look over to the following page, I only highlighted one item and that was, uh, again, the community development with that specific grant and you can see that there's, uh, again, a pretty sizable, uh, uh, difference that we didn't, although we did spend more. Um, if you look at that, you'll see that the year-to-date expenditures were 2,740,000. On the previous page, the revenue came in at 2,203,000, about a half million dollar difference. So, when you look at the, the last number, the 155 in the far corner, uh, where you have that variance of expenditure, revenue, expenditures over revenues, they are purely, uh, what I would tell you to be a, uh, timing issue related to the DNR grant. So, from an operational standpoint, we actually did very well with, with the budget, so. I just wanted to clarify that because there were some big variance numbers in there and since Mr. Seld wasn't here tonight, uh, I thought, well, heck, I can explain, uh, where that is. But all in all, I think, you know, again, a very favorable, uh, you know, outcome for the, for the fiscal year budget.
So, I know this was asked for at least to be a review tonight. Uh, there's obviously a lot of things to look at if you're going to get into line by line. There's opportunities to do that, get back with, uh... There's opportunities to do that, get back with Mr. Pastu, if you have them, unless there's something specific that beyond what was already explained here this evening, I think is a start. But John?
With the absence of not having a magnifying glass.
I apologize for that.
That's all right. I guess bottom line is, what you're saying is, you know, because of the MDNR funds that kind of, you know, are factored in here, pull a lot of that out. We did not, we still have, we netted with a fund balance.
Yes, we did, from an operational standpoint. Yep. It's just a timing related with the grant expenditures and the reimbursement when they come in.
That's the bottom line.
It is. Yep.
Mr. Pastu, another item?
Another item I wanted to talk a little bit about, I handed out a sheet, it says to mayor, and this is from the Executive Director for the U.S. Conference of Mayors. And in the background, there's three orders that the Federal Communication Commission is contemplating, the first two dealing with essentially, again, you know, reducing the local control of the public right of ways as it pertains to management of cell towers and also the distributed antenna systems, like we recently went through with that. Again, the deployment, the industry wants, has made an argument that's convinced the FCC that we're heating the deployment of this technology, which I think is nonsense. But you need to know that it's out there, and they're looking to take action by the end of this month. The third action item, and I'll have Miller to address it when he has a moment, is that in order to level the playing field, now that we've given all these advantages to one aspect of the communications industry, that there's now an attempt to level the playing field by dramatically reducing our cable franchise fees. We received over $315,000 last year in cable franchise fees, of which half is committed to impact for, you know, not only the public access and education and government channels, but services that they provide. But depending on the magnitude of it, it can have a phenomenal impact nationally and even locally on a lot of that programming that has been pretty standard for the better part of 30-plus years here. So I don't know, Miller, if you had a couple of moments to talk about that. I know your room's been involved.
Mayor and Council, Miller Boudry, Executive Director of IMPACT. I researched this quite a bit. I contacted the Alliance for Community Media President, and he pointed out some things that I want to share with you. And also, I talked to our local, the state-level president, and she also gave me some information that I should share with you. And as you probably all know, we do a lot for the community, you know, and we're increasing that. And over the years, IMPACT has had a great relationship with the city of Monroe, and it's growing, okay? That's why I'm here tonight, running as your cameraman. But one of the things that is obvious right now for us, and of course, if Ed Seld was here, he would agree, you know, the estimated budget for the franchise fees estimate for this fiscal year was estimated for our share was only $160,000. Okay, so $320,000 is the total that the city would bring in. We're seeing a decrease already. And part of this is in addition to what the FCC is looking at doing is maybe making that level playing field and eliminating franchise fees possibly, is the fact that people are cutting the cord, okay? So right now, in our first quarter that we're watching for this fiscal year, we've seen a $4,000 decrease in our funding that we're receiving from the city. If that continues, we're looking at $16,000 less. So, you know, as Executive Director, I'm very aware of this, and I'm looking at all the ways of creating new revenue streams, funding and whatever, to keep that numbers up for us to continue doing what we're doing. But the interesting fact is that this is nationwide, okay? And the cable companies definitely look at eliminating the cable side, cable TV side of their services, because again, everything is moving and migrating over to the internet. So I even talked to one of the installers. He says probably in 10 years, there won't be any more cable TV as we know it. And the rules right now, or the agreements that you are aware, you may be aware of, is the fact that those franchise fees are tied to just the cable TV service, not the internet or whatever. And there should be a push to the extent of trying to get those franchise fees to show up on the franchise, you know, for the cable, or I should say, the internet services and the phone services that these companies Comcast, Charter, and such provide. But that's not the case at this point. So it has to be renegotiated on a state level and on a national level. And I think there's going to be a big push, because the profit margin, from what I've gathered from my conversations, is that there's a 100% profit margin when it comes to broadband. There's only a 9% profit margin on cable TV. So cable companies definitely see there is no real good profit having cable TV. And if that goes, then those franchise fees goes. So I think we should really look at trying to see if we can get the state to get more active to the extent of trying to make it a statewide thing to support the franchise fees. Because again, that other portion that you're receiving, that you're using, is going into general fund, you know? That affects a future road project possibly, or something down the road that you guys need to have taken care of. And with the issues that we're dealing with TTE, this is just in addition to that loss of revenue. So I do have a website that you can go to get the statistics to the extent, and I will email that to you guys tomorrow, so that you can research that and read that information that was provided to me by the ACM president. Any questions?
Looking at Vince and see if he has any follow-up to it.
No, not really. It's just disheartening, I think, in many ways, not only losing the local control, and as I think I put in the memo internally, you know, you've got this spaghetti of infrastructure within these limited right of ways, and now you're going to basically, you know, usurp all local control and trying to manage what's already very difficult to begin with. And the reward for that is, you know, eliminating the resources that you need or substantially reducing it to provide that oversight. So it's disheartening, but it seems pretty well on its way, though, too.
Andrew?
Yeah, I got a little bit of an opinion on this. There are 16 people in this room right now. Seven of them are in elected office. There's five city staff, and there's four members of the news media. Half the members of the news media in this room right now are with IMPACT. If you're watching this, because there are no citizens and members of the community here right now, if you are watching this at home, on live TV, or on YouTube as it is recorded, you are watching it because IMPACT is reporting on it. If you are reading it about in the paper, you are reading it because Monroe County Radio or the Monroe County News put it in the paper for you to read. Accountability of government is incredibly important. We need to make sure that the elected officials up here in front of you are held to account and making sure that they're doing the right things that are in your best interest. I think it's incredibly important that we support First Amendment, that we support our news media, that we support their ability to report on the government, of which we are a part. And recently, in not just this case, we have found that at both the state and the federal level, the local municipalities are having to take on the burden of governance because they are shirking it, that we are getting unfunded mandates that we have to deal with, such as the lead and copper rule that just went down. We just had our community forum, and they had talked about this, but we're seeing very little in the way of action. We are coming to agreements with other local municipalities to try and solve our state's We can't keep the water clean, so that we, the city of Monroe and the city of Toledo have to work out an agreement ourselves to make sure that water flows to the citizens and that they are cared for, because the state and the federal government are apparently incapable of doing it. And we see one more time that the state and the federal government are going to stick it to the little guy and make it hard on local communities to be able to report on the government, to be able to report on officials at that level, and then to be able to fund any operations that happen at those levels and happen closest to us here at home and you all who are watching. I just think this is incredibly important thing to support. And local news media outlets are the only way that you're going to find out about things that are happening in your community and in your government that you voted to represent you, and that it's the only way that you're going to be able to ensure that they're representing you the way you want to be represented. So I think absolutely we need to support this. And I would support giving an increased share of the franchise fees that the city of Monroe receives to government access cable, so that they are able to provide these services. And it's unfortunate that, once again, we are left holding the bag on these issues, but I think it's important that somebody does. And we've seen the action that the state and the federal government have taken on this, and it's left up to the municipalities to fix the problem, and I'm going to step up. So thank you.
You know, I think of other items that are currently within the state, and I think Andrew mentioned a few that we've kind of had to rally and unite around, because Mr. Pastu gets the same requests that come through, I'll say, the mayor and council, when he talks about support. And recently, we as a council supported the fight that goes on regarding dark stores and big box stores and the vacancy and the assessment and values. So it's just another example that we, as local government, are challenged to make ends meet when decisions are made that don't take into consideration the impact it may be. So I know Mr. Pastu's got those requests as well, when he looks about support, whether it be letters, whether it be financial, because there are, there will be litigation. The comments from council?
I will actually say one more thing. The state of Massachusetts, if I understand it correctly, fully supports public access cable television in their state. They, I don't know how they fund it or do whatever, but they have made, passed legislation to really support them, because they have a great network of stations that really get the word out and help promote communities within that state. So that's, you know, it's something I think the state level really needs to look at and see, you know, that there is a good model there for us to follow.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks. Your Honor?
Yes?
Regarding these three actions, yes, sincere, are we going to communicate? I know that we're already contributing towards the PROTEC, Michigan Township Association, all that. Are we sending letters or resolutions regarding these issues to our representatives?
I'm not sure that there's any action. I mean, most of it's been taking place at the FCC level, and certainly, you know, with our representation with PROTEC, you know, there will be something, you know, certainly on our behalf, maybe not specifically with our name, but clearly, you know, as a member of PROTEC, and a lot of times, they'll just list all of the member communities that are part of that.
Well, the second action they had, they referenced Senate Bill 637. And I just have to believe that the Congress has oversight over the FCC, at least some of their purse strings, relative to these type of issues.
If I may, Your Honor, I think actually you may have had some conversation with Senators Orne about that, Senate Bill 637, dealing with the distributed antenna systems already.
That was probably, I want to say, a month, maybe two, a month and a half ago. Obviously, as new information comes in, such as this, as I say, it's on the list for my further contacts, whether it be the state senator or state representative, to let them know, the councils, the dialogue and impact that we see it as, why that's a negative. So there'll be follow-up conversation as well. Mr. Pastu?
The last item that I have for the work session would be at the regular meeting tonight, under the consent agenda item 2145, GIS consultant extension. There's a motion in there for a three-month period. I'm going to ask that you, you know, pull that from the consent and make a separate action on it to make it six months for a not to exceed amount of $47,000 and $40. We're in the process, we went back out looking for advertising for a position that would be involved with the oversight of this. I don't see this being completed within three months, nor do I see any benefit to continue bringing this back if, you know, three months later from now, because I just don't think we'll be ready at that point.
Questions?
Vince, any thought? I know that you're, I think this, the last time we talked about this, there was, you're looking for like a person that's going to be in charge of information technology, and then the GIS will be underneath that.
That is correct. Yep.
Isn't there, can't we advertise for the GIS person, and then when that director comes in, they would report to that director?
Well, I think the thought, you know, Mr. Seld and I've had the conversation, is preference of getting this person in first. We've actually been happy with a lot of the work done by Ritter and their responsiveness. But we do think that not only, once we have the director in place, the GIS position would not only be responsible for updating, but actually using it for operational purposes, extracting the data that's available, whether it's police, fire, other purposes, using it for some land use items that we may have.
I guess where I'm going with it, I don't have all the numbers that we've committed to Ritter since we started this a while back, but I have to believe that the amount of money that we've provided them in consulting fees would more than compensate to have a full-time GIS specialist on staff with benefits.
We're close to the previous incumbent for that position. If you consider the salary the person had as well as the benefits with it, we're close. But it's still a little bit over. I'm not going to mislead you, but it's not that far over from what we were paying previously for the incumbent before your retirement.
Any compromise on just keeping it three months, because I think that kind of puts, to be honest with you, that puts a little bit of heat under you and Ed to get a, get a, get a.
And sometimes there's good purpose for doing that, so. I don't, as long as you understand, I don't have any problem with it. But I just keep bringing it back here, but there is some benefit to putting a fire under us every once in a while, too. I wouldn't have any problem, as long as the rest of the council is fine with it as well.
I guess, you know, the council agenda item says three months, understanding that city manager is letting us know that there could be a challenge, that when three months and one day expires, that have this conversation, if it doesn't come to be. But if there's something additional that comes up in that timeframe, that even, I always say, you never know what comes up, could be a different direction, too, so.
And it's maybe just maybe an update, is where we are with the hiring of the director position. So that's fine.
Knowing that, obviously, we'd like to, I think there's been value for having the work that's being done and what's coming in. I think that's been a long set from the council, what the opportunities with this program will present and grow into all the departments. And wanting to move forward, I think we do, I think city manager does as well, as well as the assistant city manager. If it stays at three, understanding it may come back, but we will keep moving forward.
With that, I'm not going to ask that you remove it from consent.
I mean, that's just my thought.
No, you know what? I occasionally employ a similar approach to certain things I want to accomplish, so I understand and I'm fine with it.
All right. Any other thoughts from the council on that? Obviously, at this point, he's asking if it moves forward, and obviously, the recommendation which and how it was written, it's going to be at our council meeting for, obviously, discussion and vote. Vince, anything else?
That's all I have for the work session.
Your Honor, I just, one question.
Yeah, because we have, there's other areas I didn't stand up.
I don't see Patrick here, so I, you know, I guess it's just out of curiosity. We're going to allocate, we're putting a purchase order in for $18,000 to nursery for the tree, the fall tree planting. Who's going to tag those trees?
Mr. Abbott or Forester.
He's going to go out and tag them. He's not just going to accept what the nursery is going to provide.
No, no. He did that, I think, with one of our other projects. No, and he's actually identified all of the locations where those are going.
Okay.
The print's pretty small, but he knows exactly where those replacement trees are going.
He is going to go out and actually inspect and tag before they pull them out.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I.
Yeah, I guess I'll, because my understanding on that is, is also the, the type of tree as well. Fitting into not only what we're looking to, to plant and some, some varied species of trees, but also the variety of where they're going to go. So I think that's been part of the upfront work. Andrew?
I also have one more note on item 2148 for the, for the trees. And I think that it matters what species of tree we put in. I would like to look at ones with more vertical root structures. I say this in light of the recent sidewalk repairs that have been happening. We spend half a million dollars a year repairing sidewalks, and much of that is due to the roots of the trees tearing them up and causing damage that way. So I think that if we do our homework on the front end, that perhaps we're able to reduce, and I, I know that we've, just this year, we also cut an arborist position from the, from the budget, and, and maybe they might be able to alleviate that situation somewhat as well, but it's just worth looking into.
If I may.
If you might, because I don't see any, just probably good things.
We still have our arborist, a forestry position.
Yes, thank you.
And clearly, I will tell you, much of what went into the species that we have here is a function of what's going to fit in the terrace and replacement with that. One of the things our inventory indicated that we had 45% are maples, and so you'll notice there isn't any there. We're trying to diversify the, the species that we have in the terrace area. And clearly, in each of those areas, you know, there'd be some that are more specific for other, given the amount of area that you have with, between the curb and the sidewalk and, and also with, you know, other large trees along the block, you know, where they get planted, so it's the greatest opportunity for survival and thriving.
I wouldn't know, I'm not a botanist.
Andrew, I think your point is, you know, we have many silver maples, and while they, they get large and at times look great, they do have that tendency to do just what you're saying as far as uprooting that. And, you know, looking at the fact sheet and 179 locations, and it's 1.5% of our total inventory. It just tells you how many trees we have as, as a tree city, but also why that's important to our community neighborhoods and our, our streetscapes. And this will allow us to continue to get the trees in the right places that the forester has identified, so I'm looking forward to this. The comments on any agenda items? Not? I think we're about at our time. Mr. Pastu, any final comments?
Nope.
Okay. Nothing further, I'll close the work session, and we'll start here shortly. Thank you all.
We're going to go into the.